We're only being four days.
Are we up and running? Okay. Let's go ahead and call this meeting the orders Tuesday, July 5th, 2016. We're gonna stand to pledge allegiance to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mentor reports received and filed. No?
Oh, I'm sorry, the recorder is set.
It's closed.
Yes, it is.
Assessors, annual.
Yes, all that. Commissioner, committee liaison reports, upcoming meeting.
We've got another meeting there.
Mm-hmm.
I don't really have anything between. It's a little weak.
This is American media.
Constituents meeting tomorrow morning. United Way Video, you gonna do?
Didn't know anything about it.
Friday.
Are you inviting me?
Yeah, at 2:15 down at Life Row.
I'll be at the lake.
Fridays, East Side, we got K-Watch, you want me to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Friday night, National Guard dinner. Sunday is St. Martin's Parish meeting. And that's all I've got.
Oh, we did get an invitation to go to the city council meeting tonight for Dr. Kleikolm's resolution for his retirement, did you get that?
I did get that.
Oh, you get that?
Yeah, you can go represent.
There you go.
I'll keep it. I visit our neighbors up north.
Okay, business contracts. Bid award discussion 2016 dash 26 asphalt materials.
When we kind of thought I got two responses, I should have the bid tab, recommendations to the lowest bidder in each category with availability. Any questions?
Just just for pickup prices when we're doing repairs.
Can you open that up?
I just finally got to it. I've been done my agenda. Any surprises on there?
No.
I don't have any questions about it.
Good evening. I made that we have order most the best available materials for the asphalt materials.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
We have the unfinished business.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank you. Uh, the business accounts payable review.
Yes, please.
This is the big one?
Yep.
It's a long weekend. So I'd ask for approval of account pay.
I made that we approve accounts payable pending review.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Second final reading of budget adjustment number four.
Okay, this is for $350,000, this is that temporary note.
Randall Drive.
Randall Drive.
Is there Randolph Drive? No, there's.
This is not Monday, Danny.
It isn't Monday. I do need a motion to approve of that.
Is there court order number four?
Yes.
I made that we approve and sign court order number four.
Second. All in favor? Discussion of drainage problems on Shop Road. We've been emailing back and forth and talking with Mr. Council for quite a while. It's been kinda, I don't know, Larry, do you wanna?
Oh, what it is, please step down, you know, anytime. We've got a, here, I'll look over. There's a drainage pipe there in Randy's place that we went up and keep contact with. I think it was Randy was last.
Commissioner Elscher, a year or two ago.
We've come out.
The board was.
We came out and changed our pipe, well, why did I say our pipe? The pipe that goes underneath the road. We changed it out and put it back. We advised him at that time, you know, from there on down, was his responsibility, you know. So he's got an issue. We first thought that we had a solution to it. We went through the files, looking back, see if there was anything in our file. We found one for Shop Road, but it wasn't for theirs, further up the road, where Dable Page, we used to live up there. There was plans there for an extension, but we could not find anything on this road. There's no drainage management. Or there's nothing going down the hill. We did go out and ran a camera down it, and I can show that to you if you want. I brought the video along. It hit approximately 32 feet off. Where there's a drop inlet, someone had constructed right there at the end of our pipe, and that's where the other pipe's connected to. And it goes down there and approximately 32 feet off of that is where there's blockage. We couldn't get any further. We talked to Randy, he was gracious enough to let us go out. And look, we never could find the end of it. There's a lot of, a lot of material down there, and brush and stuff, and we never could find the end of the pipe. So I'm not sure. When I called Randy telling him about this, that we didn't have any paperwork on it, we were gonna offer that we would try and get it open if we could find the end of the pipe, but Randy didn't wanna discuss it at that time. Kept asking to let us come out and meet with him. We were gonna offer, we'd open the pipe and camera it, but if it was bad, he was still gonna have to replace it.
What's that address? Where else I'll look at that one?
3312.
3312. I remember we looked at a couple of them, so.
Yeah, the work you did a year or two ago drew from more water my way.
Randy, I disagree.
Well, just the, from looking at the amount of water that is flooding my driveway, it is higher and more often, this has been, this has probably been going on for five to six years. There's erosion, there's something else from, and if it's my pipe, then I guess what I say does not matter. I mean, I don't know, I know the person that lives across the road from me built that house and said he did not put it in, and there was only one owner in the meantime, and they are gone, but nobody around there remembers that being built in there. But if it's, if it's my pipe, then I say, why do I have 100 yards of downhill ditch coming into a county pipe across my road, then diverted to my pipe? Why should I take on the added load of all that drainage? There's a slope that comes down, and it's a little, there's a little ditch there, I've got some pictures, but I tried to, can I?
Mm-hmm, sure.
I tried to.
Yeah.
And the erosion is coming from below, causing sinkholes. But then again, if it's my pipe, you know, I just don't understand if it's my pipe, why I have to take on 95% of the water to go through there as other, as county water. And that, to cause that erosion, the pipe, someplace must be broken down there to. And it has gotten worse, I guess, if it would. But I don't know who, yeah, like I said, I don't know who on the pipe, I claim I don't, and if I do, then why am I taking on so much county water?
So where's the one that is coming from across the street? Is that the one that? I mean, I know there's one, that right there where that is.
Yeah.
It looks like some.
Yeah. Here it comes down that hill, and it goes under that driveway.
Where do we do our work at?
Right here.
This was.
Open those up a lot. And I guess, I guess there was a pipe going there before, I did not know it. Now I know it, because I see it, and I drain that drainage.
And yours is sitting, your water is all sitting here?
Well, whenever it backs up, yeah, it goes right up to my garage.
Both of them?
Yeah. And if I didn't have a slope, you know, I've got a slope in my garage, it goes up here.
And then where's the, this is where, that's blocking up there?
Yeah, somewhere, I don't know if that pipe angles, or if it goes straight.
It makes a little angle, but.
Okay.
That's the one we, the camera.
Well, you know.
And this is where it's blocked. Coming from down the hill, and the water's routed under the road to what, public works up to my garage.
Right there.
Oh, I see where this one is at.
And where the blockage is at, is approximately right there, Larry, you said it, I think, right there, that's where the blockage occurs, and I can tell you the video over here, we have a camera. And what it's doing, it, this is the camera, it's starting out there at that drop inlet, I just showed you on the picture. With, there is, as far as, you know, rusting in the bottom of the pipe. It takes a little bit to go through this.
How far does it go down?
We don't know.
How far can you go with the camera?
32 feet, and you'll see, you'll see it here in just a minute.
And once you get 32 feet, that's down pretty much below this house?
No, it's, I'll, I'll go back and show you where it's at.
Okay.
What he's doing here is he's rotating the camera, he'll get a picture of any debris in, you can see there's a rock or something right there. He's taking a picture there. This is approximately 3 feet off of the culvert, or drop inlet. This is where it makes the bend to the right, you can see there, it's going straight now, the pipe bearing off to the right, as you're looking, I'll show you again. This is probably eight feet off, it makes the bend. There, it's about approximately 12 feet. At about 18 feet, you start seeing some debris right there. What he's doing, it takes a little bit, he first, pipes and those that he's going through.
I've been talking to him.
I don't know.
Not the same watching, maybe without.
Yeah, it was pretty ingenious, really.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Not much of a fun.
But we're good with that.
All these things are going on.
Yeah.
I wasn't going.
I got, I got to have the customer wait, sure I'm gonna bring that back and.
This is where, here, 24 feet here, where it's starting. He actually has to back out a little bit beyond this camera, the wheel's too large, so he's gonna have. About 27, 28 feet. He'll back his camera out, and that's where he has to go back and get different wheels on it, get different smaller wheels on it. This is where he's starting back again with the smaller wheels. Right there, 28 feet. 32 feet where he couldn't block further. I can let it run out, but it's basically all it is right here.
Where's that 30 feet at?
Okay.
That's where I was trying to follow that, I didn't catch your picture before you. I was looking at Dave's picture, I think, when you were filming.
Okay, where this, this is approximately, what Larry did when he measured out it, from here. To right here, 32 feet. And what we didn't get a picture of is there, this is the retaining wall between Randy's house and your neighbor's house. There's a probably, what, five, six foot retaining wall there?
Wide.
No, when you go off the backside.
Oh, yeah, at least. A little tight.
But there's a retaining wall, and like I said, I don't think Larry's got any.
The retaining wall is where the erosion is really, my neighbor, he dropped a load of dirt a year ago, and that's already gone. Over time, the retaining walls are high, and my judgment is going to just pass. And then we're gonna have a ditch right there.
What we got, like, when Randy first called in about, we went out and there was some issues with this pipe, we replaced it from here to here, that inlet, same inlet, and it runs right here across the road. What Randy's, and Randy's, what he's saying is correct, that there is water coming, not necessarily from the county, but also from his neighbors and stuff. But the issue being is that that water reserve prior to, we didn't burn any water there, the water has been there for however long the world's been around. You know, it's drained through this area, and an older road was there prior to the house that was being there, so there was a drainage ditch going across there way previous to this.
What was the problem? Was there a problem? Was it not?
I remember Larry, you remember.
Would that be tough, and not to push as much water?
No, that, I think what it was, the bottom was just ate out of the pipe. You know, look at those pictures, like, what we showed on your side, it's just where the bottom was eaten out underneath, and I think that's what's happening back here, you know. What I'm thinking, just about that money, that this pipe is bad right underneath that retaining wall.
That's what my neighbor across the road thought.
Yeah, I think.
I got, well, that makes sense to me.
But we can't, like I said, we, you know, I'd like to try to talk to Randy previously, what it looks like, the pipe comes about right here, and then it comes up straight and then angles over this way a little bit. We've walked, we had two of our guys out there walking that whole hillside, in fact, they went all the way down to the, pretty close to the home of Randy's, and we cannot find the end of that pipe. There's a lot of, a lot of trash.
Yeah, a lot of trash.
A lot of trash, a lot of trees, you know, they, they, we can't clean.
So you don't know where it comes out?
And we can't, we can't clean it from the top, that's the issue, you know, we offered, we're gonna offer, Randy went metal with us to try and open this for him, but we needed his permission to go down in there. We're gonna have to get equipment down there of some sort to try and find the end of this pipe, you know, and try and open it up, but, until we can find the end of it, because we tried getting it from this end, whatever is blocking it, if it is blockage and not a bad pipe, we're just gonna pack it in there and even harder.
Probably the only thing we could do at this point is take our water truck out there and run water in it, see if we.
See if we can.
See if we can see it.
I don't know if anything else, but, you know, what I, one, one I offered to meet with Randy, what we wanted to show is that the county, there never was permission, we wouldn't allow a retaining wall to be built across the top of one of our pipes. You know, we have a lot of people in the county that have added on to our roadway crossings, and I'm not saying Randy did it, I don't know if it was, that they've done it without permission, but we wouldn't, you know, that retaining wall, that's one reason we won't let people build across there, is that if there ever is an issue with the pipes, we can't get it out, you know, without doing extensive, you know, modifications to our work.
There's used to be a special road, district road, I guess, years ago, so I don't know if they did something.
We, we had a lot of their files, but we can't, like I said, we can't find anything. I have, you know, people go through the files upstairs looking, you know, we can't find anything at all, same. If we had some where we showed our, you know, I'd be more than glad to get into it, but by doing this work here, we're setting the precedent, you know, we've got, this is the only one that's like yet. You know, that's, that's the problem. There's other pipes been added on to in the county without permission from us, you know. We ran into one over on Sharon Drive, we actually think that pipe actually runs underneath the home.
So are you offering to go over and?
I, like I said, we're offering to try, but we need, and that's why I wanted to meet with Randy that day, was to try and set something up where we could at least get down in there, where we could do, you know, I don't know what it's gonna take just to find the end of the pipe. There's some of the trash is gonna have to be moved aside, I'm afraid, there's trash over the top of it, maybe that's where the blockage is at, or it's just filled up to that point where we couldn't get through with the camera, I don't know.
Randy, you okay with that?
Well, so it's determined that this is, I mean, my property?
No, it's not, it's, we're not, they were just, we're just trying to.
I don't know, okay, the erosion of sinkholes, what, doesn't have to be water coming from?
That's what we wanna try and find.
Find out, and then, you know.
Well, once we get the pipe, if we could ever get it opened up, we can video again and see where the whole system is.
I think that's fine.
Well, we just, Randy, I know you were upset the other day, I was just trying to explain this to you.
I'm sorry, when you told me it was, you thought it was yours, and then you told it mine, I, I didn't know what's going on, but, yeah, I just reacted, I couldn't come out that day.
No, and we wasn't gonna come, I was wanting just to have a meeting with you, where we could come out and meet with you. You know, we're willing to work with you on it, Randy, but I, what we don't wanna do is, you know, the wall, and that's our biggest concern, the wall.
I, now, when you said, you know, work on it would be, well, you say delicate, but I could imagine, you know, you have to do some of that retaining wall, there's gonna be a lot of ground given.
Right, and see, that's, you know, that's why we were saying, we'll help get it open, but if it, if it pipes bad, unless the county commissioner says, yes, you need to help repair it, you know. I'm, I'm open to suggestions, we've not done it in the past, but you're all a different commissioner, and we've worked with them in the past, so.
But with that retaining wall, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, that would make our.
No, we don't, if someone tries to build over, we tell them, you know, we, unless we've got a drainage adjustment there, that we can actually tell them they can't, you know, if they just build across it, if they add on to our pipe and they build a retaining wall, we send them a letter or note in the file that if something ever happens to that pipe, they've gotta tear the wall down and replace it.
Do you have, this county have a drainage treatment on my property?
But by statute, just by case law, the water was running there before. You can't divert water from some other place else, Randy, like you were saying. We have to have permission to lay on it, and there's statute, case law says you can't divert water from one place to another without permission of a downstream wall.
Well, isn't that what you're doing?
No, it was there before the house was built.
It's a divert of water, you're diverting the water.
It was there before.
It was there before diverting the water.
And the water was going through there, all that water was going there before the house was ever built.
Okay. So, that's, what, I don't understand, I just don't understand, you know, 95% of that water is coming from the drainage system in this development county. Or is it by God?
I, I don't know. It's, it's not God, you know, where the water runs, it's gonna run downhill, and it's been that away from creation on. It's not something we change.
When did that backwater start flooding your driveway? How long has that been like that? How long has that?
Oh.
Five years, six years? So before that.
I think it was draining. Never said, I, when PB was my commissioner, PB Forbes or everything, he never was, I, I just, he never was responsible either. Then you were, or whatever, I mean, whoever first contacted you is what anything.
I would try to run some water down there and see if you could find the end of it.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine, whatever, whatever gets us moving.
And figure out where it's at, or you can unclog it, is gonna be the biggest thing. It's just been going on for five years.
At least, I, you know, probably at least five years.
If it gets backed up in your driveway, I understand.
Yeah, I'm not worried, you know, the backing up in the driveway, a little hassle every now and then, but I'm more concerned about the, the sinkholes.
Yeah, down below.
And, and without some kind of action of some sort, it's just a matter of time, I don't know, 20 years or two years.
I'd say, I'd call you. Two years.
Well, thank you.
If you'll get, we'll come out.
Yeah, that's.
And see what we can do.
Well, Randy, what we don't wanna do, we gotta move stuff around, we don't wanna have, say, will you move this thing at all?
Oh, no.
The trash down below.
Oh, see, now that's, yeah, that's good.
I think that was.
I got rental units to move, right, and. I gotta run and get it from both sides of there.
That's what I, I fear, I just, you know, we're gonna have to move stuff around just to be able to.
Well, I don't care about that, I mean, whatever gets us moving, I know.
Like I said, we'll get what we.
But if we find it, then what we gonna do?
Well, if we can find the end of it, we'll open it up.
Okay.
Yeah, or at least attempt to, it may be where it's caved in some bad, for the.
I'd be, yeah, my.
I've got gutter down Spouse Center the same way, I couldn't find where they came out either. I ran a water in, found it, tore my arm up, and eventually get fixed, now is this, is that our responsibility to do all that? You know, I might try and help find it and stuff, but if that's not our pipe.
Yeah, we didn't add on, like I said, just knowing the people in the past, I can't, I've only been there twenty-one years, and it's been there longer than that, I can't even, you know, about for that, but we don't allow anything like that now, this first stuff.
So if we go out there and help get it unclogged and everything, then basically after that, it's all gonna be the owner's, homeowner's responsibility.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But we'll try to help figure it out.
That's, we're all Stokes, we're trying to be, you know, to do as much as we can to help. Yeah, I don't, I don't think you're gonna run water through it, I think, I think you're gonna suck something out of there, I don't, probably.
Well, it's kind of an opening at the top, like, it's, it's, it's seeping out, 'cause what's the water he had backed up in his driveway, it went out, so it's, it's not going out fast, but it, it does get a lot.
Yeah, it does.
We'll probably have to let it dry a little bit so we can see it, if it's seeping out slow. That's why, again, and I, I know Randy, just at the moment was upset, but we could've got in last week and let it dry.
Well, we could wait.
Yeah, but we're trying to get.
We could wait.
They're talking rain, with the whole rain we've got this weekend, it's, you know, it's just, if it's just making a wet spot down there, it'd be hard for us to see, but, you know, and we can run a water truck out there.
I had no idea that pipe was going to waste, I, I, I just thought it went on the other side of the retaining wall.
Well, that's, I don't know, if, if the landlord, if the neighbors don't, we may cover the end of it up, where that dirt.
Uh, he put it on the back, yeah, it don't, well, no, I don't think.
But again, book the board.
I don't like the dirt, if it runs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we'll try and do everything we can to help you, Randy.
All right. Okay.
We'll be in contact with Randy, so.
Okay, all right.
If you get any questions or views, if you wanna, feel free to call me, I'm very good, but just ask me on the learns.
Oh, I was confused there, you're, okay.
I'm very good, that's very good.
Randy, here's your picture, I, I mean, you know your own property better than anybody, probably, just run a garden hose in there, let the water run, and see if you can figure out where it's coming out of.
Yeah, if we can find the end of it, we can get Sean York out there to, to, that's the guy we, you know.
What are you saying, man? I'd say just run a garden hose in it, and see, once it dries out, that's up to you.
We can take, we can bring our big water truck.
Yeah, I did say.
Yeah.
Put the garden hose up to it.
Well, well, it, what would be better, definitely.
Look at himself if he doesn't wanna stumble down right there.
I, oh, I don't care, I mean, no, no, I don't.
All right, we'll stay with the plan then.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bunch of boot color, any food down in there?
Well, that's something we may do, but the problem is, if it runs down right below it, there's real nice homes down there, if they get all set and see a bunch of blue water, green water, or red water coming down there, what are they gonna say? So, it runs right at the, the natural drainage way.
Takes it to those tubes down below that?
Yeah, 'cause Bill Rodman and, and, uh, Phil Helscher walked there last week trying to find it, and that was a miracle, that Bo even went down there and he's afraid of snakes.
So am I.
That's all I got.
We have any other issues to come before us? We've got a closed session, six-ten dash oh-two-one-two. Anything else before we go into closed session?
Nope.
Okay, I'm gonna be going closed session, six-one-oh-dash-oh-two-one-two.
Target.
Girl phone.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Sorry, how they're like.
Oh, thank you. I got too many Larrys.